Mr. Scravano. Mrs. McCullough.
Thank you. I'd like to recognize Rod and Connor are here working behind the scene to broadcast our meeting on Channel 20, so thank you, gentlemen. I would like to remind board members to hold your questions until after the presentations, so that we can use our time most efficiently. Are there any changes, corrections, or additions to the meeting minutes of our last committee in the whole meeting? Consensus to approve those? Nod?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. We do not have any new business for tonight's meeting, and Mrs. Yar is going to go first with an administration update on the budget.
Okay, so I'm going to start off by going through the budget process that we use this year for FY '20 and the assumptions that we've built into each individual budget. So for fiscal year '20, we decided that, we looked at the problem that we had with allocating resources, and we also noted that we wanted to properly align our resources to support individual student needs. So that's moving our Phase 1 to site-based budget. So our change this year for the schools was to increase for all. So our allocations, we've called this, in the past, since I've been here, we've called it our supply budget, because that's all the schools really did receive. The amount was so low that that's really all they could really spend it on, meaningful. So we wanted to solve that problem and actually increase the allocation for everyone. There was also an additional amount given for poverty. So we did a Tier 1, Tier 2, which is very similar to evidence-based funding model. So we did our own version of evidence-based funding. And then we have an opportunity for an internal grant of $1 million, so that is available to schools also. But it's really an internal grant, so they have to apply for that through our normal budget process. And there's performance incentives that we've also made available. So when we've allocated all this money out, we had to figure out where to get this money from. So what I challenged everyone to do was to go back and find $5 million. So that was our stretch goal. So we had to go back into our budgets and look for this and identify where we could have the savings to support our schools. Really, when you're doing that, you don't want to use incremental budgeting. When any organization does incremental budgeting, it tends to grow without us doing a deep dive. So for this year, we wanted to go back to zero and really review all of our investments and initiatives to see where we might be able to reinvest differently. In doing so, we have come up with a new template, and this template helps us walk through where the savings could be identified. So the first thing that we'd look at when we're looking at our budget is what is our urgent need today? What is it that we need to invest in? And then there's a contracts page, so all of our contracts are listed. So as you see the individual departments bringing forward their budgets, you'll see that we've had this contracts page in the presentation. And then our overall budget summary. So there's other supplies that will be built in, but these individual areas will be called out in our presentations. So there's also new requests for districts. So the district cabinet members might also want to have some new initiatives or new investments. So we've told them that we had to hold everything flat, but any new dollars that they wanted, we wanted to hear what they wanted to invest in. So we did this last year, and I call it the Shark Tank style, where you give a pitch. So this is what we did last year, March, April, and then we'll do this, we've done this already this year. So they, we had to look at whether or not it's aligned to our strategic plan, our return on investment, and then look at opportunity costs, if that's what we're looking at, and then we either approve the investment or we carry it forward to the next year. We don't want to lose sight of what these investments might be or what people's ideas were, so we want to carry it forward even if we don't invest in it this year. So that's over our overall process, and so now I'll go over the mechanics of the assumptions that we use when we're looking at our budgets and building our budgets. So our revenue side, we used 6% increase at $9.4 million, so that's evidence-based funding. And we looked at the low point of the last five or six years, and we came up with a 6% increase. The tax levy, we did, we do assume that that will be five, or 4.1%, excuse me. And then we built in a $3.6 million in new property. In CPI, we've kept flat at zero, or kept at zero. And then corporate personal property replacement tax, we expect a decrease in that at $17.6 million. Grants and other revenues, we've remained flat. Even if our grants go up, our expenditures also go up, and so the net effect is zero, so we'll leave those flat. Our expenditures, we have built in a 2% increase in all of our salaries that you'll see coming forward outside of our normal, we do have our built-in, our labor agreements that we already have underway, and so those are built in. Benefits, we have 5% increase in healthcare, so as we go along, these will change, and then we'll update the committee as we go along. So we are looking at this 5% increase in healthcare and really fine-tuning that right now. These other benefits are pension and just other areas that we have to invest in. So I talked about having the purchase services and supplies at the current 19 levels, so we remain those, we had those remain flat. Well, there's one exception in capital outlay for the buses. That's, you know, between $2.5 and $3 million, so we did allow that one to be invested. And reporting back, I've already said that we would, as the assumptions change, we'll come back and update the committee, and then each cabinet member will present their preliminary budgets. So you'll see the details, you'll see the part that will come forward tonight, and we'll continue to do this throughout the budget season. And then at the end, I'll bring it back as the whole, so you'll see the whole budget, which will then be approved. Any questions on that piece?
I have one. What's driving the CPPRT decrease?
There's admin costs that are in, so for the last six, seven, eight years, it's fluctuated quite a bit. The CPPRT, it's really the admin costs that are passed on, and if the state's going to take it, give you, on one hand, sometimes other things have to go down. So that's really our assumption at this point, just to be conservative.
Other questions?
The internal grant, was that what you were talking about when you said that there will be a Shark Tank-type pitch to Cabinet?
No, actually, that is new request that Cabinet has, so they will have, we have two separate things going on. So we have the schools, they're building their budgets right now with their additional monies, so they are able to braid those funds, we've sent out a communication on that. So they're able to look at their funds all in one place to get bigger bang for their buck. So if the district wants to have additional asks outside of the schools, then that really wasn't our goal this time. We really wanted to allocate more resources to schools, but we did want to hear their requests as well, and so that's the Shark Tank style when Cabinet brings that back.
Thank you.
Other questions?
Mr. Rongs. On the tax levy assumptions, so this budget year will cross levy years. The first half of the budget year, the levy's already set, correct?
Correct, yes, so this is the second half.
And the EAV, that doesn't really affect the revenue, that's just, that'll affect the tax rate if that assumption turns out to be correct. But on the new property, $3.6 million, are you, because I thought that we didn't take new property in the current levy year.
We didn't, we didn't.
So are you proposing, is this budget based on taking new property in the next levy?
Yes, in '19, I'm proposing that. So that amounts to $400,000 in additional revenue, approximately.
But that's not really a discussion we'll have until we do the levy?
Right.
Which won't be until this fall?
Yes.
Okay. I mean, I understand, but it is a little bit backwards, and so if we're going to ultimately approve a budget that's based on the assumptions, we ought to have the full discussion about what we want the levy to look like first before we approve the budget, so I'm just going to throw that out there.
Yeah, absolutely, we can have that.
Others? Thank you, and you're going to go right into your areas?
I am.
For budgeting, so presentations.
Yes, so I'll hit financial services first, this is my largest area that reports to me. And then, again, I talked about how we looked at our investments, so you'll see these slides, and then we decided to continue or abandon the investments that we had. So really, financial services, the services that we provide are accounting and financial reporting, which you see every month, grant expenditure reporting, we have to bill out to the state, so we get money back from that every time we bill out. And then we provide budgeting, payroll, accounts payable, debt issuance, reporting and compliance. So we haven't issued any debt since I've been here, but there is compliance and reporting that I need to do on an annual basis. And then we also invest the cash for the district. So here's the financial services team, so I am over that. I do have two executive directors, a director, a couple of directors, so this is our overall financial services team. We account for $490 million, budget and actual, and we balance over 50 balance sheet accounts every single month. We also process 250 cash receipts, and we create, post, and review 100 journal entries per month, and we have very few staff to do that. So it's quite a heavy lift, but we do it well, and we have great internal controls now with doing all of these services. We have a similar service, or similar process for approving budget transfers. We're trying to get more detailed with the budget, so we're actually transferring budget in actual dollars at a more detailed level, before it was more at a high-level department level, but we're getting down to the detailed level, so we can really analyze that a little more appropriately. And then we also have one person that does the grant reporting on budget approvals and amendments in my department. Payroll, we process 8,900 paychecks, so it's just kind of interesting to see the volume that comes through. You approve it all the time, you approve it when we bring it forward, but to understand just the sheer volume is pretty staggering. We also process 7,800 pay assignments, so that's when we hire, transfer, or separate, the payroll staff's doing this. And that amounts to $183 million gross pay annually that we're issuing. Accounts payable, we process 4,300 to 5,000 invoices monthly, and that amounts to $13 to $18 million. There's a revenue piece of this, so I decided to include this. So we do have a rebate, so the accounts payable supervisor in '16 implemented this process so we could get back money in rebates. So this is cash money into the district. So '16, we had $103,000, and now '19, we're projecting $100,000 in rebates received. We have a dip from '18 because those construction projects are wrapping up, and there's not as much money going through there. Purchasing, we have 750 recs going through, purchasing requisitions going through. On average per month, we have two people doing that, two techs doing that. We have a purchasing process manager, and then we have the director, and we're doing bids and managing the district gas cards and purchasing cards. So I just did an RFP, which we awarded on the purchasing card, and I'll combine the gas and purchasing card to, just to really, for efficiency's sake, both at the individual cardholders and for the district's staff, so we won't have to do things twice, basically. So for this year, for my urgent needs, I wanted to put our accounts receivable billing module and get that up and running. We're in the process of doing it now, but it will carry on into FY '20, and we'll need additional support from Business Plus software to finalize this. There's also a process called STR, which automates purchase orders. Right now, we print out the purchase order and we fax it to the vendor. So I have used the reference of 1985 before, if you've heard me speak, and so I'm trying to bring it to the 21st century, and really, we can automate that. We have all of the emails already built into our system, we can just automate those out, and they just go out. So that'll help our staff a lot. We also want to do professional development. Software isn't changing that much, but we do really need to have some people attend the user conference. And then for accounting, Governmental Accounting Standards Board issues new pronouncements every year, we need to keep current with that. And then budgeting, staff need to, you know, continue, continuously improve on that process as well, so we'll have some professional development built in to our budget. So the solution is really to approve the investments that we brought forward for the FY '20 budget for this area. In '19, we had $4.8 million, and then FY '20 is 3.3. So that's $1 million that was identified, as now it can be allocated to the schools. So it's not, part of it was just, this is a transparent way of showing it, we had $1 million sitting in purchase services that was really for IT-related items, it was set aside for that, so that's the big part of this. We had some cost savings in salaries and benefits, because we've hired our newer staff in at a lower rate than the previous staff, and then we've had some savings just by really, you know, identifying where those, basically our non-capital went down $180,000. So to be transparent, that's where $1.4 million was sitting, that we can now allocate to schools. And then for contracts, I talked about, in the process that we use, we'd have the detail of contracts. So you can see all of our contracts here. This is what you're normally seeing through a PDSA at this point, if it meets that threshold. And I am also implementing electronic work papers. I have an old-school audit binder right now that I use, three-ring binder, and so again, just to bring that to a more current version, but it works, but it's, sometimes my posted notes, my review notes end up somewhere else and not where I need them to be, so it's a lot better to be electronic, so that I'm actually implementing right now. There's peak times for our, what we do, for budget and for audit, there's definite peak times, so we do need additional assistance during those peak times, so I have those vendors in here, workplace we've used. Steve Stromquist has helped me for the whole time I've been here, so that's been a couple of years. And then we have external audit that's outlined here, this is going to come forward, we went out for RFP on the external auditor. And then Grant Thornton does our other post-employment benefit audit, but it's really for external audit, so it's not quite an audit, but they review that, give us the numbers for our external audit. So the return on investment for this is effective internal controls, just gaining efficiencies and retaining our quality staff that we have, and then providing reliable financials, which all lends itself to being excellent steward of taxpayer dollars. Any questions on financial services?
Two.
Okay.
8,900 paychecks and 5,000 employees, that doesn't match up, do you mind?
Eight, nine hundred.
Say 8,900 paychecks?
Annual. Per month, per month.
Per month?
Per month.
Yeah, okay, all right, I thought, was thinking per payday, I thought, wait a minute, I don't have that many people. Okay, all right, okay, so that's per month, all right. And then the other one was the, not clear on the million-dollar purchase service IT, so is that going away services, or is that going, just being shifted to another department?
It was contingency, I would say.
Okay.
So it really was, it had been cleared over for four, we hadn't spent it for four years, so I just wanted to put it out there.
So you took it out of the budget?
Yeah.
Mr. Escobedo.
So, controls, internal controls?
Yes.
And you just reminded of the vast amount of money that's managed by the district, but what kind of internal controls, effective internal controls do we have in place to prevent skimming theft and any potential loss from that perspective?
There are quite a few. So on the expenditure side of things, we have many people approving it, probably too many, to tell you the truth, so I'm going to be looking at that in the next 12 months. I'm not going to commit to it this fiscal year, but the next 12 months, I need to look at that. It was not a risky area, because expenditures, like when I was briefly an internal auditor, I didn't spend any time there, because we have so many people looking at the expenditure side of things. So that's buttoned up really tight with just everyone signing off on it. On the receipt side, there is, there was, two years ago, a bigger risk on cash receiving side, especially at schools. So on the cash receipt side, we had people in schools that were collecting the money, writing the checks, they were reconciling their bank accounts, they were doing the whole thing. So we didn't want that to happen. So that's, two years ago, I added a position in financial services to reconcile all the bank accounts. So at the school level, here at the district level, we can pull out reports, and I've called schools and said, it looks like you have $3,000 sitting in your safe right now, either you have $3,000 sitting in your safe, or you haven't closed out your drawer, so you haven't closed out your cash register. So I can see that from here, my staff looks at that every Tuesday to make sure there's not money sitting in the safe or not sitting in the safe. So we are looking at that, you know, on a weekly basis, making sure that the schools are closing out their cash drawers and balancing. Elementary doesn't get a lot of cash, so we let them go about a week, and then they can close out on Fridays, and at every, at the end of each month. So we don't have a lot of cash, cash at the district level, but that's really where our risk is at the schools, but that's been mitigated for the most part, because we're reconciling. And we reconcile all of our bank accounts here. So really, our best control was balancing our balance sheet accounts on a monthly basis. If there's an error or fraud is occurring, we are going to catch it through the reconciliation process. So I have a staff accountant who reconciles, and I have another accounting specialist who reconciles all of our balance sheet accounts. Then it goes to, now goes to the executive director of finance, because I have one hired, and so she reviews it, and then I will do a final review, a quick review, but she's done all the detail work. And the finance manager's also reviewing all of our journal entries, everything. So really, it's about balancing. If you balance the cash account, which everything goes through one pooled cash account, you have really identified most of what's happening, and then balancing all of our cash at the schools. So we do that within two weeks of the month-end. Right now, we're, the goal is always the second week of the month, we close out the books, we have reconciled everything, and we're, you know, we've identified errors.
Rongs?
I just have to open a question, which is, you've convinced us that you do a lot. Do you have adequate staffing, do you think?
I think that I'm still short, I don't have depth, to tell you the truth, I really don't have depth. I have one senior accountant who does grants, all the billings, all, you know, it's one person. And then my other staff accountant, so if you're in private, you would see more than our staff accountant. So I have one staff accountant who does all the journal entries, and the accounting specialist is going to school to become an accountant, and she's, you know, getting very good, and she has actually been really good. She was doing all the journal entries for the district when I came on, with no accounting degree, so she has done a great job, but we are probably, and we're short, I would say, in accounts payable. We only have three people, you know, paying all of those bills. Our target is 45 days, and we're hitting that at about 75 to 80% of our bills that are getting paid within 45 days. But there are a lot of hours that are being put in to do that, so I'm evaluating that.
So are those positions in the budget, or they're not in the budget?
Those new, those positions that I think that we could use are not in the budget, but I'm identifying revenue sources, like with the rebates that we received, and I really don't want to add an FTE unless I've, this is what I say, unless it, if it looks like 1985, I'm not going to add an FTE. I want to do everything I can to streamline the processes first and then evaluate that. So I'm still in the valuation process of that, and I, and that's, I don't want to, you know, invest if I don't need to. So I've been supplementing with contractual support.
We have trick microphones again tonight. Other questions on financial services? Okay. You're doing one more?
I am. I also supervise distribution services, so I do have Steve Christopoe here, in case you ask me some specific questions that I don't know about distribution, because that's not really my area of expertise. But we use the same process that I described earlier. They do receiving and warehousing, material movement, truck requests, inter-office mail, print shop, and textbook inventory. So that's a really important piece of what they do as well. And this is their team, so again, I said, they fall under my supervision, and then the director is Steve Christopoe. So their goal is to receive and deliver materials within 48 hours. So they receive it at distribution, it's pushed out to the schools, most time within 48 hours. They also complete 350 truck requests per month and deliver equipment for competitions, which I didn't know when I took this over, and then dispose and recycle materials. And I did know about the textbook inventory, because I helped with the implementation of that, that inventory system that we use. There's also some opportunities for revenue and cost savings, and also to reduce the impact on our landfill. So the recycling efforts have lent itself to $18,000 that we've received. And then we also repurpose the furniture from our inventory, and so we estimate that as $165,000 savings, because we're not buying it. We know where this furniture is, schools need something, Steve and his team are able to locate it. So the mail room, average 12,000 pieces mailed monthly from there, and then they do the daily sorting and distribution. Their workload for the print shop is 100, about 118, 119 job requests, and these are all of the things that they're doing. They're doing nameplates, posters, and then the impressions. Textbook inventory, they receive the textbooks in, they have to barcode all the textbooks and sort and distribute them all to the schools. So that's a very heavy lift, especially in the summertime. So they're transferring $1.6 million worth of textbooks for school year 2019. So their urgent need is really to replace some equipment. So they have an outdated printer in the print shop that they have incorporated into this budget, and then we're also proposing replacing an aging vehicle. The distributions summary has gone up, and that increase is in salaries, and it's more than the 2%, because we are anticipating overtime for the new building, so to move from operations to the new building. So that's where the increase is there, for the overtime. And the other areas, we were able to absorb the new urgent needs that we talked about. So the return on investment for this area is to provide support to all the schools and departments. We repurpose and surplus materials and distribute the textbooks, and then that all lends itself again to excellent steward of taxpayer dollars. Any questions on distribution?
Mr. Rongs?
I'm just curious, this has never come up before, but of all these things that I think of, you know, this isn't really part of our core mission, have we ever done an analysis on the print shop about whether it would make sense to outsource that?
I did ask that question. So it's very expensive, I can have Steve talk about that, but I asked that question before I was going to invest in any new equipment. I'm like, should we even be in this business? It doesn't make sense to me, as you said, but he's got some numbers he can share with you on that.
Okay, sure.
In addition to cost savings, we provide the ability that we can do it right away, and we could do it like almost the same day. So our turnaround time is right there for everybody. There's a lot of requests that are like, I need it tomorrow, immediately. If you outsource it, you're going to pay for the urgency plus the additional fact of what it is. For example, yard signs that you see that says RPS that we've made, in the print shop, it costs us about, just under $5 in materials. If you were to go outsource that, it'd be about $22 per yard sign. Sports banners that the high schools purchase, they are about 18 inches by 3 feet, we make them for about, you know, $10, $11, $12. If you'd go outside, it'd be like $30, $40. So there's a cost savings there. It also varies in what you are making exact, as well. Plaques, we can do it for $7, where you buy it for $21 or $30. It's, you know, there's a cost savings there. And with that, with the fact that we have that machinery and the ability to turn around real quick, that's what we do.
I guess I'll push back on the cost savings, I don't think you're comparing apples to apples, because when you buy it from somebody that you've outsourced it from, you're paying for their labor, you're paying for their overhead, you're paying for their facilities, and you just gave me the number for materials, so...
No, materials and our time it takes in, we factor that in together.
Including your...
Yeah, including our time for...
Your salary, your benefits, your utilities, your facility costs?
Because your staff's doing other things, too.
Yeah, our staff's doing other things. We can also work on several machine, several projects at the same time. So we could be making something on one machine while working on another machine as well. We could have all our machines running at the same time and with a staff of two. So we could be making on multiple projects as well.
Okay. Segal.
Are there opportunities to bring work into the print shop and, I guess, get economy of scale by running more production?
I don't understand the question, like from...
Provide print services for other businesses, for instance?
We've never really approached that, I don't know if that's something we looked at.
Would there be any barrier to the school district providing those sort of services?
I would think that'd be something for policy or...
A governmental agreement with...
Something like that.
Right.
...owner of the city or somebody?
I mean, we do have the capability of doing something like that, obviously.
Yeah, and you've got a great print shop.
We have plenty of machines and the ability to do different things, so we could do that with other entities, yes.
So it seems like there could be some cost savings, not only for the district, but for other agencies, businesses, to take advantage of, you know, capability that we have.
Question on the equipment is leasing versus purchasing, is there an advantage one way or the other? I know that the printing equipment, as the technology gets better, and so might be outdated within five years or whatever, so is it better to lease or better to buy, or...
Faces of equipment that we purchased were about five, six years ago, and when we looked at it at the time, it was better to purchase than to lease out for a five-year five-year span, or six-year span. And we're still using them, so...
Some of the equipment, some of the machines that we're still using are very, very old, so they're lasting a long time.
Yeah, so it, it varies. The newer technology machines have a long, has a shorter lifespan, unfortunately, because it's digital. But some of the old offset printers, and some of the more, like, hydraulic machines, they've been in the district longer, but now they're at a point where they're starting to break down, and we cannot find replacement parts for them.
No, I'm going to turn this over to Mr. Earl Dotson Jr. You're welcome.
Greetings, board members. Good evening. Thank you for the opportunity. I'll just say really quickly, I would love to replace the microphones after the flak we took with all of this. Just thought it'd be better to hold off on all of our new stuff here.
How about a little megaphone or something, maybe, you know, handheld ones?
I know, huh? So I will be presenting the preliminary budgets for the communications department, security services, and the welcome center. Here are the fund loca, the funds that they are, they come out of, and their locations. You can see here the organizational chart for the departments that I oversee there. Our strategic focus is under goal two, engaging partnerships. Here you can see listed some of the core functions of the communications department. The highlight that I would kind of, I would pick here, in terms of kind of our focus and where we spend a lot of our expenditures, obviously, our, our main focus is, is making sure that we're always improving the image and perception of our school district, striving to be the first choice for all families. Our kind of key focus has been around the 205 vibe, of course, which many of you have participated in. Mr. Seagull and Mr. Scravano, I'm not letting you off the hook on participating in the vibe, okay? So, just so you know. The family and community engagement department, their key focus is, as you know, the very popular student ambassador program. So our team, we do all the training, we size all of the students, and we, of course, we pay for all the uniforms. The families and transition department, we're very grateful for the addition of the support specialists that supports both the family and transitions department, and the family and community engagement department. And if you can see our expenditures, other than the aforementioned by Michelle Yar, about the 2% increases, our expenditures remain flat. And here are our two contracts that we have. Next, we are going to talk about security services. They, their strategic function and focus is under goal number three, optimal climate. Please take note that Mr. Fred, Freddie D.D.D. Deal is in the house, sitting over there. You can see, again, listed here, you can see the core functions of Fred's focus and his work. Pretty much centers around the kind of our, the police contract and our security guards contracts. Those are the largest expenditures. You can see that our police contract and our guards, those contracts continue, they continue to be, to perform well, certainly essential to, you know, providing a safe and secure environment. You can see here the expenditures. One thing that I will just draw your attention to, if you look at repairs and maintenance, you can see that there's an increase there, $77,000. That is as a result of, as we expand keyless access entry ways into our buildings, with that, with that increase comes an increase in maintenance costs. So for example, metal strips, door panels, so that's, those things, that's what that increase is for, to pay for those additional materials. If you look at other expenditures, if you can see the huge decrease under other expenditures, last, FY19, those were one-time expenditures, so that was for our legacy alarm systems that were, that were old and outdated, and our Raptor system, the kiosks for the Raptor system. So those are one-time spends, so that's why you see the large decrease under other expenditures. And here are the contracts that remain relatively flat. The increase under the secure tech, security guards, is as a result of their hourly employees and the hourly wages went up, in addition to, we've had an increase in requests for sporting events and extracurricular activities. The welcome center, again, their strategic focus is on goal two, under engaging partnerships. You can see here some of the core functions of the welcome center. They've done, they do lots of really quality work there. I think some of the highlights, I really like, they have a very diverse staff, and really do a high-quality job of customer service, welcoming in the general public into the welcoming center, treating them well, and so that's very important to me. In addition, I think another key focus, and I think it's important to mention here, is this is the third year of, of implementing the superintendent's goal of making sure that every family, a kindergartner that moves into a specific zone, that they attend that zone where they move. So we are continuing to make sure that that, we are implementing that with fidelity, to ensure that that continues to happen. So that's, again, one of their, one of their things, that they have done a great job of making sure that that's being implemented with fidelity. You can see that their expenditures, again, remain relatively flat. The, the slight increase there is, this year was the renewal of notaries in the office, so that, that, that came up. And then here are all of their contracts, which all remain flat. And if you look at our return on investment, or the value proposition, if you will, certainly we want to continue to provide a safe and secure learning environment. It's imperative that we continue to promote positive stories, and, you know, enhance the image of the school district. It's very important that the welcome center get students enrolled, and that we really make sure that we do a, a good job of making sure that we get the families in, in here, get them enrolled in those schools. Obviously, community partnerships are vital to our school district, and we will continue to streamline the families and transition department. Thank you very much, and I'd be happy to answer any questions.
This probably doesn't relate to the budget, but since you had it in one of your slides, you talked about the secret shopper penetration testing.
Oh, good test, good test.
How we doing on that?
Okay, so...
Mr. Deal, you want to talk about that one?
Sure. I, I, I...
Because that's one that's close to my heart.
Yes, it is.
I want to make sure the wrong people are not getting into our buildings. Okay.
So thank you very much. Everybody's familiar with the secret shopper. The basic premise is, we hire a company to come in and test our security integrity by basically doing unannounced drills. We've done 12 to date, 10 have passed, 2 have failed. The 2 failures involved doors that were either recently opened by somebody, so the person tailgated in, and wasn't challenged by the person that came in the door ahead of them, and then basically were detected later on. So it's gone very well. I have a follow-up meeting with the principal to discuss some of the issues that I may have seen, or whatever the company has brought forward, and there's a, a report that's forwarded to us, so that this way we can have a in-depth look at what happened. So, so far, very good. It's, it's not uncommon, when I enter a building, the first question out of people's mouths, are you the secret shopper?
Not so secret, huh?
I'm not so secret, though.
Any other questions for Earl or Fred?
Thank you.
Wilson, are you next?
I believe I am.
All right.
Yes. So our biggest change is actually in our organizational chart this year. As you recall, last year, we added strategic process auditors who go throughout our organization and ensure that we are auditing our different processes. And we are going to bring back our data research analyst, which is a revised position that Bryce Johnson currently had. So we are opening that back up and asking for candidates to apply. And we've also moved out of my department into, into schools Susan Fumo, who's the executive director of school improvement, who will take a bigger focus and deeper focus on school improvement, and different organizations and functions within schools. So these are the different functions in my department. So we really have five different things that we do across the department of continuous improvement, and I have provided just a brief overview of the different tasks that we do within each of the different portions of our department. And as you go down and look at our budget, we were able to actually save costs in all of our categories, partially due to the first variance in salaries and benefits. One of them is the transfer of Susan Fumo's position out of our department, so you'll actually see that reflected back into Dr. Vosberg's department. But in other areas, we were, we had some cost savings. For one example, quality peer reviews will no, no longer be done at the high school in the same manner and format in which it's done, so that was a cost savings. And then other areas, different ways that we were able to sort of look at our processes and do things at a lower cost. So overall, this year, we'll be able to save costs on continuous improvement. Any questions?
Mr. Owens?
So we approved a contract for the academic return on investment people, DMG. And, and one of the things that they've talked about in their proposal is their recommendation that we have somebody internal to, I don't know what to call it, but basically, somebody responsible for sort of monitoring that process. Is that, is that going to be under your department? Is there any discussion, I guess, is what I'm asking? Is that going to be where that's going to land? Is that going to be budgeted in this year's budget?
We, we want to start the work first and get a sense of learning what we need to do. I think it's possible it could report in through me directly. I think it's possible that it could be in the continuous improvement department. I think it's also possible it could, it could flow through the chief academic officer. Those are the three most common approaches. So we will, we, we are not planning on making that ad for this budget cycle, so it would be for the FY21 budget. We'll have DMG with us for this time, so we don't have to make that ad yet. And I really want to spend some time doing the work first to get a sense of where it best, best, most commonly belongs. But it's certainly possible it could be in continuous improvement.
Okay. And then my other question was, what, what changes are you making to the high school QPR process?
Yes, so we're actually going to do a revamp of the entire quality peer review process, and that's going to be collaborative with schools, our team, and the curriculum department, to really look differently at the metrics, so they are aligned to our scorecard, and that we have metrics that drive and change and improve instruction in the other processes in our departments. So we're going to look at the way we do things and keep those things that are positive, but give it a little bit more substance, so we can use that as criteria aligned to our scorecard.
Good. The questions for Kelly?
Okay.
Human resources.
Been waiting for you now, so... No pressure.
No, not at all. I don't know how I follow all these presentations. So we have the preliminary budget for human resources. In HR, we do support all facets of the organization, but most of our work does flow into goal four, quality staff. So human resources, and we presented to the board numerous occasions in the last couple of months, both from recruiting perspective and all the other areas, that we've shown some efficiencies. So some of this will be repeat, but we, our dollars are spent mostly on recruitment, talent acquisition, that also works in, in our core function as well. Talent development falls under HR as well, but Mrs. Alt will actually dive in further into her actual budget, so I won't spend a ton of time in my presentation, and I'll allow Mrs. Alt to discuss that. Also in HR, we have our benefits and allocations compliance. Allocations and compliance, from a budgetary standpoint, falls right into our core and talent acquisition expenditures. And then benefits, there was a presentation on a benefit summary last board on a lot of our claims, but then our benefits is a fund 11 that we work directly with, the finance team and budgeting team, to look at those dollars. So there is the organizational chart for HR. You can see Sarah Jesky oversees the core and talent acquisition portion. Ellen Schubert is the director of allocations and compliance. Claire Ferguson is our recruiting manager. Ines Harris is our benefits, excuse me, benefits manager, and Diana Alt is the executive director of talent development. So for recruitment, again, just a refresher for the board, there's some areas of focus there, looking at deepening and expanding our university partnerships, continuing on our education job fairs, continuing to focus on bilingual recruitment, as well as specific minority teacher recruitment events and strategies. We participate in the teaching exchange, exchange program with Spain, and then the newly approved incentives that we're enacting this hiring season. In terms of talent acquisition, focus being on an efficient, accurate job posting and placement process, making sure our job offers are, again, accurate, welcoming, and timely to ensure that we are getting our candidates and getting them placed. And then on our new hire appointments, to make sure those are, again, are efficient and welcoming, as this is the first kind of look at our district, and, and you never get a second chance to make a first impression. So we want to ensure that those new hire appointments are professional and informative. Again, I won't spend a ton of time on talent development, because Mrs. Alt will address that, but again, we look at talent development as our orientation, training, and mentoring piece, as well as the professional development creation that we have going on internally, as well as externally with some university partners, and additional teaching support that we have in place. So if you look at a budget summary, you'll see overall that we are down over $40,000 in FY20 compared to FY19. Salaries and benefits, much like other departments, we've had some change in terms of employees leaving us, and new, new hires coming in, and those new hires coming in at much less salary than the incumbents had. So that participates into the, the negative variance that we have there. We also have non-capital. We've done a lot of expansion in HR the last couple of years, so we've budgeted for some construction and some furniture and other non-capital items. We don't have the need for that in FY20, so we were able to take a large chunk out of the budget there. Terms of contracts, a lot of the, the variance with contracts is the year-over-year increase that's built in. One increase on frontline is up over $10,000. What we've budgeted for is an API addition to AppleTrack, so that when we enter information for new hires into our AppleTrack system, it will automatically feed into Business Plus, so that's going to reduce the dual-entry piece, which would help to mitigate some human error in terms of entry. And so that has been budgeted to move forward for FY20. So in terms of, oops, sorry, return on investment, again, we're looking at retaining quality staff, looking at effective internal controls, and then also making sure that we gain efficiencies in our processes, so that we can support the organization. And with that, I will take any questions.
Lori Burke, what are we still using her for?
Yep. So we've, we've used Lori on various assignments. I use Lori in a benefits capacity with her knowledge, as well as some situational. So we do a contract of up to 9,000 to use her services. As I am entering into, closing out my third year, there are still some situations that I'm encountering that I just need a little bit of mentoring and advice around specific situations that could have large district impact, and so I'm using her in kind of that mentor capacity.
You have 1.4 FTEs for recruitment, Claire Ferguson and Mercedes Brain. Is that about normal for an organization of our size with this many personnel?
Nope.
So is that number higher or low?
We're low. So part of, of the, the Shark Tank and requests, I do have in for a minority recruiter specifically, as we know that's a priority for us in the board. And so we are looking at, how can we look at that department?
Cool. Thank you.
Owens? So aside from that staff position, do we have any budget that's specifically dedicated to helping diversify the staff, the workforce, particularly teachers?
Yeah. So part, within my HR budget, there is a specific, there are specific line items just for recruitment, and then there are specific line items for diversity and inclusion recruitment. So those are actually lined out into our budget. Off the top of my head, the total budget for that, I don't know. I do know, in the other miscellaneous category, where you see we're up 6,000, that, all six of that is, is, was geared towards the diversity recruitment, addition to Claire's part of the budget.
Okay.
For all the different...
For all the different vendors, how many of these would you say are coming through us via recurring contracts?
I would say one, two, three, four. I would say, well, if you include Rockford University in terms of that's our RU pathway agreement with RU, I would say six of those are reoccurring. One of those is the copier-lease maintenance that everybody has, as we went to the FollowMe printers a couple of years ago.
Okay. Yeah, it's just, I think I made this comment before, but you know, when we have this recurring contracts, I think we've got to do better, because I think we should be, recurring contract shouldn't mean that every year, whenever they do, they're automatically guaranteed.
Yeah. I would say two of those, Mr. Escobedo, in terms of our fingerprinting and drug testing is with a local firm with physicians and media care that we've utilized for specs for us, which is helpful. But I will say one is performance matters, that we actually are looking at some other companies currently and a potential RFP process this year to see if that's a company we want to stay with. So I certainly agree with your sentiment in terms of making sure that we evaluate our contracts, and if that's still the way we want to go with that.
Thank you.
Okay. I will turn it over to Diana Alt for Talent Development.
Good evening.
Hi.
All right. So we're going to talk a little bit about a department that lives inside of another department, which is our Talent Development. And you heard a little bit about it when we came to you earlier this year, to explain a little bit about how we fit in HR and recruitment, onboarding, and orientation. And our big goal is to make sure we have quality staff in our organization. So we know that there's been a lack of focus and attention in that support for learning environments and structures for adults. And so we want to create a system to help our employees feel appreciated, valued, also prepared to begin employment, as well as prepared to be a part of our organization long-term. And that means we want to retain quality staff. So we figured we're going to try doing that and having a good impact on employees by our onboarding process and building upon that, providing some career pathway development, and then also having some additional support that we can provide for teachers and staff that may struggle along the way. So right now, we have Talent Development. This is our organizational chart. And as you can see, we have two directors. One who oversees the peer consulting teachers, we have two of those. And then also our mentors, our itinerant mentors. We have two people there as well. One is an open or vacant position. Our other director is in charge of all the pathway work that is aligned to the LMS that you helped us purchase, and we thank you for that again. We have a PD coordinator who's going to help coordinate all of the large events, and also all the events throughout our district, all the training that might be happening, not only at schools, but also within departments. And then we have a Talent Development Specialist, and that person helps with the onboarding process, as well as supporting the PD coordinator in those events. And then we have a PD specialist who really oversees and shepherds the RU pathway concepts. So a part of that, again, is just to look at how our department is structured. We want to really help with onboarding. That means we want to build in some orientation time, some initial training time for employees, and also mentoring for teachers. Our career pathway development, you'll see that we partner with universities for some of that. We also are creating our own pathways internally to help our teachers structure their professional learning. And then we have some additional support through PAR. So overall, you'll see, unfortunately, I wish I could tell you, that we are reducing our costs in the Talent Development Department. However, since we're a new department and really building to create new structures, we're going to ask for some money. The only thing you should see on this total is the 2% increase for salaries. That's what the $6,000 is at the bottom. You will see in the purchased services area, we have reduced by $43,000, and also in supplies, $11,000. That was redistributed or reallocated $50,000 into salaries and benefits for our subject matter experts who build coursework for our teachers, and also the facilitators who get paid to actually make sure that, once somebody enters into a course, that they can help facilitate what that learning looks like, and then end the course when appropriate. So that $50,000 went to differentials for salaries and benefits. And then the $4,000, as you can see, moves to the non-capital area. A lot of that has to do with setting up and purchasing some programs that will help, as you will see soon, our onboarding processes where we have a new way of advertising what things we do. For instance, if you go onto YouTube and you see the little hand that talks to you and helps explain things, we have those types of setups and programs that help us to deliver modules and training modules that we're moving forward on as well. So not just coursework, but also compliance pieces for mandates that we want to make more engaging for adults. Boy, this gets around. The other slide here is to talk a little bit about rentals and consultants. We do want to build some things in every year for our large venue events. We do contract with Stentrum, RVC. Typically, we spend around $10,000 to $15,000 for new teacher orientation, and also some of our other large PD events, because we have such large events that we can't, we don't have a venue to hold them. So that is one contract. The other contracts you would see there around 20 is to have some various consultants come in for training. And so that could, we anticipate most of that will be used during teacher institutes in August, and to help bring like the Danielson Group and some other contracts to us. And then the last one is to help support our RU pathway. We have tutoring we want available to help those students that are just below the line of getting accepted into our pathway with RU. And so we want to provide them some support, to be able to get them past and eligible for entrance. So again, return on investment, that would be to retain quality staff, of course, and have an effective internal process where we can monitor, we can track, not only professional learning, but also how our students are doing in the high schools and into the RU pathway. Very simply, we want some efficiencies that we can see. Are there any questions?
Any sort of comments?
Diana, one of the strategies that we have seen to be successful is the multi-classroom leader. Is that person's, that position's training under your department? Or how did they get the skills to be good at being a multi-classroom leader? Your mic buttoning? We're struggling with our mics.
I can tell. Right now, we have some teacher leader pathway work that's being designed for all of our teacher leader positions. MCL is one of them. Mentoring is one of them. We'll have some other ones that are coming along the pike as well. We do hope that Amanda Sugar can start working with our MCL model to go in and help those teachers implement the model effectively and efficiently. So yes, we do have some plans to help support that.
Good. I think we all believe that that's one of the tactics that's going to benefit our kids. And I just don't want people to be thrown in that position and then.
Correct.
You know?
And we've gotten some feedback that they are really wanting some extra support and extra professional development, and we are geared and ready for deployment of that.
Mr. Dixon?
You kind of extolled my thunder there.
Oh, I'm sorry.
But really, mine was, wasn't the criteria of some of the, some of the positions that we have, because you want, like you said, diverse pool, but at the same time, you want qualified individuals that can handle the responsibility, because they're in a leadership position. So you want them to be multitasked and be able to come in in whatever situation that they're in, because every classroom is different, every teacher style is different. So to be able to resonate with that teacher and their circumstance with their classroom and be effective. So those were some of the things. I noticed that, like you said, you have one mentor and you're looking for another one. Are we effectively recruiting, are looking for individuals, or how does that come about?
So we are right now. The posting should have gone up this week. We really wanted to work strategically of redeveloping those job descriptions and really making that model more meaningful. So yes, the answer is yes, we are actively recruiting. We also have the current mentor that's in there is way past their contractual obligation. At this point, they were supposed to cycle after three years, and they've been in it for five or six years now. So it's time to let that person go back and do something different and get a new person in. So we'll actually be looking for two itinerant mentors. So yes, we are actively searching for that.
So you probably do the hiring, our questionnaires. My question is, I guess this, is it more, when we question, is it basically the same question for everybody, or is there different? I just want to make sure, because I don't want, because some of the backlash I've heard is that they're not fair. And so.
So I personally can tell you, I follow the interview protocols that the HR department implements, and that is that everybody receives the same series of questions. Does that mean that we can't dig into some further questioning if we feel the need? Absolutely. But they are a standard amount of questions that are ready upon the first candidate that gets interviewed to the last candidate that gets interviewed.
Mr. Dixon, I may just jump in there. We do have a base set that we want to make sure that all candidates get. So there's, we can look at information from candidate to candidate. But depending on resume and experience, there are additional questions we may ask in terms of performance base. How did they create? How did they participate? What were the outcomes on certain things that will help derive some of that additional information that a candidate brings? But there is a core set of questions, and then sometimes that resume and the candidate itself will lead us into some additional questions.
Good. And that was, and like you said, based on their information, their work history, and what they can present to the job, of course you want to dig in. So, all right, thank you.
There are times as well, if we know that there's some candidates that are close, we ask them to come back for a second set of interviews. And that may have a task that Matt's talking about, that can help clarify, really dig into what their skill sets are. But it is very strategic in how we do it and very consistent. Great question.
Questions for Diana?
Thank you. Moving right along.
Our chance to talk about our budget, the superintendent, as well as the board budget. So saving the best for last here.
Do we get to ask questions?
Yes. Yes. Please feel free to scrutinize all of us. I'll have you, we do have a proposed slight change to the org chart, which I'll talk about later, or potentially adding an executive assistant to deal with some of the additional load through the PDSA process. And just to highlight some of the changes, we have an $85,000-plus favorable variance on purchased services collectively. That's largely because of some large Fund X contracts falling off. We had the Innovation Zone contract was the main one there. And you can see that overall, there's a favorable variance proposed for $45,000 going into next year. Contracts we're proposing maintaining is the Alignment Rockford investment, as well as the McGuire Woods and the Copy Machine. The reason we talked about adding somebody part-time on the, is really coming down to, in the previous way we ran the position, that the person reporting to me was very focused heavily on supporting typical EA functions, board functions, and working directly with Mrs. Fromm. I think now with the PDSA load, we're seeing a pretty dramatic increase in workload. So we thought a part-time, 20-hour-a-week person would be a good solution there. We wanted, of course, do that in the framework of having a favorable variance in our budget proposal. I know the board wants to come in under budget, so we want to make sure that we did that as well. And so with that, I'll open it up for any questions. That's really the big change.
Mr. Rollins?
Where is the IASB in S?
Yes.
Purchase Services.
Yes, that fits into, that fits into the purchase services.
And what are they gouging us this year?
It is now permanently capped at $30,000.
Escobedo?
So I think it was Mr. Rollins that a while back pointed us that a lot of our board budget is spending different items. I guess this is just more a question, comment for the board is, do we foresee, and I don't need an answer, just something to think about, is, do we foresee, how do we want to manage the board budget? Is this something that we want to continue and spend the way it's been spent? Or do we want to maybe think in the future, kind of take control of that budget from the board perspective, and think about initiatives that we want to drive, whether it's with the community or other? So just, just food for thought, nothing else. Not that, you know, administration has not done an excellent job. I think they've done an excellent job of spending the money wisely. But at the same time, I think it's just something to consider.
I'll be happy to forward it on to Board President Scovano, and you guys can take a look and see if there are any opportunities that we're missing out on, for sure.
And then I do have another question.
Okay.
McGuire Woods Consulting. Can you speak a little more about that and where we're at?
Yeah, we're in year, I believe we're in year six of renewing that contract. I think it's been important for us to have a direct level of personal lobbying connection. I've been really pleased with movement we've been able to make in the past on things like the evidence-based funding formula. At times, large statewide funding, or large statewide lobbying groups don't always share the same interests as the district. And this year so far, we've been very focused on teacher access, and specifically making sure that we maintain evidence-based funding. We've looked at trying to support some of the goals for minority access for teachers by looking at statewide policy on teacher certification rules. And so we're well on our way in this season. But it's been pretty slow-going in Springfield this year. It hasn't been as fast-paced, to be candid. A lot of what we're looking at, revenue, we're looking at long-term projections on the potential cost shift, and being at the table for those kinds of discussions. So not as much to report this year as there has been in past years. Good news is the governor's budget has an additional $25 million beyond the $350 million, so a total of $375 in evidence-based funding. That is, that's huge that we're at the table to continue to drive that conversation. Also, about $100 million in early childhood investments as well, which could potentially benefit the district, because we largely fund that with federal and state dollars. So those are a couple of the priorities that we're trying to maintain on the McGuire Woods contract.
Mr. Dixon?
Yes, as you call, I might as well. I was more leaning towards the, not that I don't enjoy the lunchboxes, I really do. But I think, could we put in a budget that maybe get something else, you know, hot meal? I don't know if that's possible. I mean, you know, like you said, we are volunteering our time, our energy for this. That would be fine. I just think there's other local business that we can support. That's really, that's all.
We'll be happy to bring that to Board President Scovano. We certainly will take all the considerations, and Mrs. Fromm can canvass the board to decide. In the past, we moved away due to waste issues. We ended up bringing home a lot of food and concerns in that regard, wanting to make sure we kept that food budget at a very low level. So we've really tried to honor that. We're certainly modeling that same behavior with district departments as well. But we'll be happy to revisit it if that's the board's will. You certainly have flexibility and the ability to increase that budget if you so desire.
One of the issues, Mrs. Fromm, is that the provider has to be willing to accept a purchase order? Not all of them will do that, right? Okay, all right, okay, all right.
Work something out.
Any other questions for Dr. Jarrett?
I think on the McGuire Woods one, I, it's hard sometimes for me to wrap my thoughts about what's the value of a lobbyist. Know that one of the values for us is that superintendent doesn't have to be down in Springfield fighting for us all the time. So that's a... So that's certainly a value, and I think there's some risk management stuff that they contribute and that kind of stuff, or whatever. You know, I guess at some point, we got to decide whether or not we want to renegotiate that, do we want to bid that out? Maybe there's, you know, a less, less expensive way to do it, you know, I don't know. But been happy with what they've been providing. It is, it's hard to justify and value on preventative stuff that doesn't happen, you know, or whatever.
And at the end of the session, we'll have a great chance to evaluate the value as we do annually. It's budgeted at that amount, that's my recommendation. I'll be happy to talk about what occurs. A lot's going to happen typically in March, April, May, and June, and then we'll revisit the contract as we do annually in July, and the board can take a look. I've been very pleased with the service of the firm, but always happy to make sure that we're getting the proper value. Those are significant dollars, for sure.
How often do you meet with them?
We, we check in very frequently. It can be daily, depending on the season. It can be weekly, at a minimum. It's twice a month where we'll, we'll do phone calls and check in. I also will at least do one or two visits a year to Springfield, but I will sometimes cancel those for the reasons Mr. Scovano mentioned, where it can prevent, if it's not going to be a good use of my time, I allow them to keep us on the, up on things. Another real big value of this is, I tend to emphasize when we're on offense, where we're going for strategic priorities. A lot of times, we're on defense. There is an amazingly prolific amount of legislation generated each year that pertains to schools, and it's really helpful to be aware of that, to know which ones are, that we really have to muscle up and potentially support, or in most cases, try to defend the status quo from a change that will be very costly. And I'd love to say that our local legislators are always in line and in sync with us, but there have been occasions where we've had to work with the entire state on issues that maybe we saw, didn't see eye to eye with our local legislators. Although, for the most part, they've been wonderful supporters of us, of our work.
I'll just. Slayed breakfast with our local legislators for a while. I don't know, is that planned, or are we doing okay, or?
Thank you, Mr. Scovano. Just, I also, I tend to, I travel with the superintendent, he and I kind of, we've gone to Springfield together, and I sit down on his phone calls. One of the things I'll just add, coming down the pike as we, as we look at our huge kind of deferred maintenance list, there is talk of a big Capitol bill coming to Springfield, and we certainly will want to be, and we remember, we've been on this list for quite some time, and we certainly want to make sure that we're on the top of that list when those dollars start, start coming out of Springfield. With regard to the legislative breakfast, we just, you know, we, we always want to make sure that those have value, if you will. And just in conversations with the legislators, we thought we'd change the strategy, if you will, somewhat, and kind of go visit them, and maybe take some trips to Springfield, or do some more one-on-one. So we, our approach has been more kind of one-on-one focused with the different legislators. But if you, if you'd like to revisit that, Mr. Scovano, I'd be happy to bring that back. To Mr. Dixon's point, I know you can have a hot breakfast.
There you go. No, I mean, I mean, the value, the value to me.
I do offer a hot breakfast with those.
You know, what's important is the relationship. You know, do we have a relationship with Maurice and with Steve and, you know, that kind of stuff? I don't care how it's done, it's just that we, to me, that we have to have that relationship and.
Absolutely. Thank you, Mr. Scovano.
I agree. That's a great point, and we do have new, new legislators, so I will definitely revisit that and figure out, you know, that we're making sure that that relationship stays intact.
Are done?
I would just conclude with saying, coming up, we're going to have a really robust conversation next month about how we're going to be doing school budgeting. I think there's a lot of exciting work that's gone on there. I think that'll be a real deep dive to show how we've freed up dollars to really invest in our schools and the school budgeting. We'll also hear from the departments that you've not heard from, and then we'll, then we'll wrap up with kind of the close, with going back to the whole, and look at the budget holistically in terms of all of the potential decisions being made, and hopefully work towards approval in, in May and June.
All right. We have no public speakers, so if there's no further comments or agenda items, I'll take a motion for adjournment.
So moved. Say it.
Or say aye? Oppose, same sign? We are adjourned at 6:00.